I'd like to call the Opelika City Council Meeting of August 3, 2021 to order. Call roll please, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Present.
Dr. Lofton.
Here.
Mr. Rout.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here. We're honored to have Reverend Clifford Jones from Greater Peace Missionary Baptist Church with us. He's going to make his way up to the podium over here and will lead us in our invocation, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance led by City Clerk Russell Jones, if you all would stand.
Let's pray. Father, we are grateful for your grace, your love, and your mercy towards us. We give you thanks, Father, for this community you have allowed us to reside in, for the leadership that you have provided. And I pray, Father, that you will bless in all that takes place this evening. As we come to, Father, to discuss the work of this community, the city, I pray for your wisdom. I pray that you will be with this council as they make decisions that affect all of your people. I pray that we will be receptive to your will and that we may honor you through all that you will do in and through us. So bless us tonight and bless this meeting. Bless all that takes place, and we'll be grateful for what you're going to do, and we'll give you thanks and give you the glory. For it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have previously received a copy of the minutes of the July of the 20th, 2021 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Some movement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Have a non-call roll please, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
We do not have the mayor with us. We stand our prayers that he would continue to heal. You all are probably aware that he is on the backside of having a case of COVID, and he has, he's much better, and we look forward to him, and he is looking forward to Saturday when he gets out of quarantine. So he doesn't do quarantines very well. So we'll move on to Citizens Communication, Mr. Jones.
Okay, now would be the time if you'd like to speak to the mayor. Well, he's not here, or the council, I'm used to saying, mayor. Please sign into the sign-in sheet with your name, address, and phone number in case we get in contact with you. When you do come to speak, please announce who you are, where you're from, your address, and please keep it to five minutes or less. Thank you.
Kurt Haley, 1101 Willow Run. I'm a tenant at that location, also own a property management company, Haley Management Company. In March, when we tabled a rental ordinance, we were promised to have more transparency and communication. Transparency is defined as an openness to communicate, to create accountability. I think tonight, as we vote on this rental ordinance, the city council will represent us, but we'll be accountable for this decision. I have over 500 signatures in a short amount of time that's for the city council from all wards and all locations. I was in a meeting with 21 nonprofits with one city council member there. She agreed that this hasn't been transparent enough. And in ordinance this big, and she's shaking her head because she agrees with me, we need, as citizens of Opelika, to communicate more properly. Every one of y'all represents one of us. I sent an email asking everybody to consider their positions. It was totally taken out of context where people considered it as how are you voting? I asked no city council member how to vote. Your position, we placed you there. A citizen in Opelika is on the top of the flow chart in y'all's buildings, not the city council, not the mayor, the tenants and the people. You have a right to choose. We have a right to choose. We appointed you. I'm a tenant. I would talk to one city council member that said they haven't heard from any tenants. I'm a tenant. At 4:57 today, I received an email at the rental ordinance from a tenant, and they said, can you explain this to me? It's an issue that we're voting tonight, and I have to respond at 4:57, that I have to answer questions that I shouldn't have to answer. March 2, I sent an email to multiple departments, and it was not responded to. When it was tabled, can I be in the conversation? Can I talk? No response. It's documented, and I get emails from the mayor that says, don't worry, you take care of your properties. I'm not worried about me. Kurt Haley will be fine. Tenants will not be fine. The experience that I've had getting signatures was terrible. The lack of trust that we have in our community from every ward, I didn't know that people wouldn't show up to our city council meetings because they're in a police department. That was shocking to me, but I'm a privileged kid. I never knew that. I had tenants that were coming tonight that would not come because we're meeting in a police department. We should have been in Jeter. We should have been in the projects, in the student housing over in the large complex, the commons. We should have been everywhere, talking to people and getting feedback. We chose not to do this the right way. As a citizen of Opelika, as my person up here on my ward, I do not approve of the vote tonight. I don't think you should vote yes or no. I think that y'all should do a task force, and y'all should get in the community and see what your peers, your people, and the people that voted for you actually say about this before you make a decision. I appreciate all y'all have done. I appreciate y'all's service.
Why, Jones, I'm making this way up here. Just for your understanding, the reason you won't hear anybody respond, we're in Citizens Communication, not Citizens Debate, and so you won't hear a response off of this during Citizens Communication. So just to let you know that we're not sitting up here just ignoring it, but we're not going to respond during this Citizen Communication, okay?
I'm John Stewart. I live in Opelika, 1100 Willow Run. I've waited 42 years to come to a meeting. I've never been to one, and I thought maybe now is an opportunity to speak because I don't want to wait another 42. So I'm happy to be here and thank y'all for what you do. I appreciate our community. We've raised our family here, and it's been a great place to be. I'm against the ordinance personally, from what I know about it, and the reason is, is that rules and restrictions and regulations, being in business, have, I can't think when they've really been good. My concern is that additional rules, additional regulations just simply hinder progress and limit freedoms. And I think I can say that from the medical field. I think it's true probably in the banking field, and I don't think anybody that's in any kind of business can really look back from 20 years ago or 30 years ago and say, I just wish there was a few more rules and a few more regulations. It's going to make life a whole lot better. I say that's not true. And I think what we're looking at is just additional rules, additional regulations that sort of look good on the surface, but as you start adding to it, whether it's a year from now or 10 years from now, what started out as an ordinance to say, your roof needs a, you need a new roof, what if they come in and say, I want new paint colors? I don't like them. And as we know, the government seems to be outrageous in some of the things they request. If it's rental properties now, would it be your bank account later? Would it be your personal house? They don't like the color of your shingles? Who knows where it will be? And I say that somewhat in jest, but in reality, that's what we see in our culture and our society, in the business world. What does this sound like? Does it sound familiar? It's called socialism. Socialism, in my opinion, as we see in the worldwide system, it leads to communism, freedom from regulations. We need free, uh, freedom from, uh, from freedom to regulations, regulations to partial control, partial control to complete control. Not everything that looks good is good. Proverbs 14:12 says, "There's a way that seems right to a man, but the end is death." The Kool-Aid looks good, but it results in death. I ask you tonight, don't drink the Kool-Aid.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
My name is Annie Jones. I live at 112 Plum Avenue in Opelika. I've been a landlord for many years. Tonight, I'm asking you also to piggyback off of him to table this discussion. We weren't involved, and it's not fair to us. Like a lot of things, when it comes to landlord and tenant laws, it's in favor of the tenants. Well, we're catching it right now. You want to know why? Because we haven't been able to evict anybody in a long time. I have a tenant that owes me over 10 months of rent, and you want to come up with more fees, more strategies to get money out of us? Who's going to throw us a life jacket? Who's going to do something for the landlords? It's always in favor of the tenants. I take care of my property. I got two on Facebook right now. It's been totally redone. So I don't know where this is coming from, but until it's further discussion, it's not the time. We are in the middle of a pandemic, and we just don't have time for that. We barely can send our people in and out of home safely to do the repairs, praying they don't get COVID in between. It's just not time for inspections. It needs to be tabled. We need further discussions on it, and it needs to be fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Haskell Patterson. I live at 305 Edelweiss Avenue here in Opelika. I am what you call a carpetbagger. I'm from Auburn.
Kurt is too.
But I've lived here over 26 years, and I love this city. Opelika is what Auburn used to be. I know I grew up there, 60 years old. And what I'm seeing happening with this ordinance scares me. There are several reasons, and I'll get into it. But before I start, Councilman Lofton, you answered this question. Do you own residential real property?
I do.
I see that as conflict of interest if you vote for this. I think you should abstain. That's my opinion. I see it as conflict of interest. Mr. Smith, what's your occupation?
I'm a banker.
Do you have clients that you've lent money to that have property, residential property in civil Opelika? It's my opinion that that's a conflict of interest, and I think you should abstain. An example of what I think is going to hurt. I have a friend owns five houses in Opelika. They're not real nice. Nobody here would want to live in them, nobody. But the people that live in them are not from here. They're Hispanic. They're happy to have them. They're low income. If this passes, he has told me, everybody will be kicked out. He's not going to comply with ordinance. He'll let them sit there, they can fill with rats or crackheads, whatever happens, until the city makes him mow them down. At this current time, those five houses are producing $2,324.16 in added loan taxes. When he has to mow them down, you're going to a lot value, a lot with a current use, and all five of those are going to only produce $610 a year. That's a $1,714 a year loss on five houses. It's just five houses. What's going to happen citywide when people shut these down? Because they can't comply. You can't go in and spend $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 on a house to get $300, $500 on the rent, when you already owe $30, $40. It won't cash flow. I think the city wants to get rid of trailer parks. Bennett's Trailer Park's one of them. I talked to Kevin Bennett yesterday. They don't own a trailer in there, not one. How are you going to get rid of Bennett's? What are you going to do? Hook it up to somebody's throat? Drag it to a border guard? What are you going to do? Here's the biggest problem with this ordinance, and the citizens here need to understand it. This ordinance does not apply to Section 8 housing, which is the vast majority of the problems in this city. Period. It does not apply. Why don't we go after the problem, which is Section 8 housing? It does not apply. You need to know that. I think this hurts the investment in Opelika. I've taken on four rental properties, one's my office, so three residential. You, if you had a box full of cockroaches as pets, you wouldn't have taken them in these properties and let them spend the night. That's how bad they were when I got them. And now I have people fighting over them because I've taken care of them, fixed them up, and rented them. Because I believe in Opelika. I believe in investing here, and sweating my brow, working six to seven days a week, nights, weekends, whatever it was, to get them. And now I'm going to be penalized for it. I ran some numbers that I thought was real interesting about where Opelika is. We finally have people wanting to come to Opelika and invest and move here. It's been a long time coming. I ran numbers today between $50,000 and $225,000 on all properties that would be considered basically residential, that people would want to invest in for rental purposes. Those numbers, when you run how many we have had sold in the last year, it's 27, to come up with absorption rate. You divide that out by 12, and that's 2.25. That's your absorption rate. We have two active properties in that same parameters. That's 27 days of inventory, 27 days. If there's 4,500 properties in the city of Opelika that are going to fall under this ordinance, and they decide not to fix them up and do something with them, and you dump that on the market, that ends up being, if the current absorption rate, which is going to go way up, that's 2,000 days or 5.48 years of inventory. That's what's going to happen. My other point is, to these people that are going to lose their place, where are they going to go?
Tom.
Where are they going to go? Thank you for y'all's time.
I'm Marle McNeil, 2500 Willis Avenue, Opelika. I'd like to start by saying that I'm very, very proud to live in Opelika. And I've told people many, many times that I think the reason that Opelika is such a great place is because we have inspired leadership. So I'm grateful to y'all for the things that y'all have done, really moved the city forward. However, I do, and also if y'all would tell Gary, I'll be praying for him as far as the COVID goes. I do rise in opposition to this, and I wanted to kind of explain why. This is a minor thing, but there is a small structural problem with the ordinance in that Section 1244-F says that it doesn't apply to Section 8. Well, there is no Section 8 anymore. That whole program has been changed. It has a new name. It's a Housing Choice Voucher Program. And by exempting Section 8, you're really not exempting anything because that program doesn't exist anymore. It, it says that basically a city inspector is going to have the right, the sole right, to determine whether or not there's a dangerous condition, an unsafe condition, a violation, and so forth and so on, which in my mind puts an unhealthy amount of power in that particular person. There is an appeal. The appeal is to something called the Property Manu, I'm sorry, the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals. I don't even know what that is, or whether that's been established, or who's going to be on it, or whether they're going to be people close to the building inspector and therefore reluctant to overturn his decisions. I don't know how that's going to work. What I do know is that the statute is criminalizing landlord conduct. It says that there's a violation. There's a $500 fine and six months in jail. Each additional day is an additional violation. I don't know if you read about it today, but the CDC extended the eviction moratorium again today till basically sometime in October. The only way a person, if a person decided they weren't going to fix the problem, the only way they can get out of violation is to get the person off of their property. How are they going to do that? You can't do that in a COVID environment. Are we going to file an eviction? Well, in my experience in my law practice, it takes between a month and two months to get an eviction done. Each additional day is an additional violation. So the 45 days it would take me to get a tenant off a property would result, and I know you're thinking it probably wouldn't, and it probably wouldn't because, you know, they might not treat them as cumulative and so forth and so on, but I'm looking at what the statute says. And that would be $22,500 and 22 and 1/2 years in jail under the statute. That's not fair. That's not right. And the lady was right, that landlords have been taking it on the chin because of the moratorium on evictions and so forth. Some people have had people that haven't been able to pay rent. The inspector comes by and says, your window's too small in your bedroom, and, you know, what's he going to do? The, it also puts the burden on the landlord to make sure the property is clean and sanitary. So if he's got a slob for a tenant, he could wind up taking it on the chin for that tenant. It says that he can be found in violation if the weeds are too high. What if, what if the lease provides that, you know, the tenant's got to do the yard work? You know, what, how is that fair to the landlord? And I went and read, the violations are determined by the International Property Maintenance Code. And I don't know if y'all have had an opportunity to review that document or not, but it establishes the standards under which.
Tom.
I'm sorry?
That's five minutes.
Oh.
Mr. McNeil.
May I have just another minute to conclude?
You can.
Okay, thank you. I've got about three or four things here to talk about. I'm going to skip right to the end. I really don't know what's behind this legislation or this proposed legislation. I don't know if there's been some spat of injuries at the hospital or something from people getting hurt in their unsafe homes. If that's not the case, then this legislation is a solution in search of a problem. It's, it's just not necessary at this point in time. And also, in the pandemic that we are in, you know, it's the wrong statute at the wrong time. Thank y'all so much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Newkirk, 206 Ballard Avenue, Opelika. I stand in favor of an ordinance, whether it's this one or another one. I have lived here all of my life. I have been in homes with these landlords. Some of them are beyond slum landlords. When you can walk in a house, you can see the floor from on the inside, and they put rugs there, and you tell them, you need to report this. They are afraid because if they tell the landlords, they won't have anywhere to stay. So some of these people are being bullied, and they are over there in our neighborhood. You know what I mean? All of them over there. Now, those of you coming out now, now, my thing is, will they be grandfathered in with this? You got the new ones are going to start here, but you got the old ones doing the same thing, and they are worse. And they've gone through generations doing the same thing, generations of money being passed down, property being passed down, not fixed up, and worse. And when they leave it, they vacate the property. And houses are sitting here, all kind of weeds are there. Our children have to live there. We have people living there with nice homes, but this is what they have to come through because of the landlords. What has happened, the ordinance have not been, but done or enforced in the past. So therefore, the ones coming in now are getting it because of what has happened in the past. How do we go back and clean up that that has happened in the past? These old homes these kids living in, you go out the back door, there's just a panel and keeping the door posted up. It's awful. It's awful. Something has to be done. And you wonder about these children growing up, why they don't have any value. Look at where they're living. They paying rent? Look at where they living and what they have to come home to. How can they take care of something that they don't even know? They don't know how to act when they go and when they sit here. They don't know. And it's bad. There is not enough houses that these people can pay for, and the folk know it. And you all know who some of these people are, and nothing has been done. Are you putting, we got to put an ordinance out there to clean the grass. I have no people cleaning the grass, cutting grass on someone else's property, been doing it for years so you could see their house and their homes look good. You all need to go out, look over this city, go to these areas you don't know anything about, and look at the living conditions. And you do that and tell me if you are proud to be a citizen of Opelika. Tell me if you are proud when you see what it is. And there are a lot of senior citizens sitting out there in these homes. It breaks my heart, and I've been out there, I've walked them, and I've seen them, and they are afraid to tell. They are afraid, and you try to get them to come, and they scared because they won't have any place else to stay. Whether it's this ordinance or whatever, but an ordinance has to take, has to take place. You have to come up with something. These are the citizens of Opelika. You have taken an oath. You have pledged to help these citizens, not just a few. You go back and get those ones. There's a Jewish carpenter saying what you have done to the least of them. You have done it unto me. And just remember, we going to sow just what we reap.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Beams. I live at 2013 Evans Drive, and I appreciate the work you guys do. And like others have said, I'm proud to live here. I raised a family here. I work here. I go to church here. I do spend some money on Amazon, but I try to spend as much money as I can here. But I want to read a letter that I emailed you all today. It is maybe past five minutes, Russell. I pray you give me the time to go over. My wife and I, Kathy, have owned several rental units in Opelika for nearly 15 years. We're committed to offering clean, safe, well-maintained, single-family homes to families in Opelika. We've had some great tenants over the years. Many of them have moved on and stayed connected through social media. It's neat to see them move on with their lives, knowing that we provided them a place to call home along the journey. Kathy and I would have no issues with Mr. Koppelmann and his staff inspecting our houses to establish that they are safe and habitable. We support this ordinance and think it's a significant step forward for our city. First, let me begin by saying the vast majority of the landlords in Opelika are following the rules, and they keep their property in good condition and would welcome this ordinance. They understand that to whom much is given, much is required, and they will not oppose a small fee and a registration required for this new ordinance. I've read the entire ordinance, and I find the excerpt from the Purpose section to be most impactful, and I quote, "To correct and prevent housing conditions that adversely affect the safety, general welfare, and health of the residents, to preserve the value of land and structures throughout the city of Opelika to provide certain minimum housing standards necessary to the health and safety of residents, and to enhance the quality of life of residents of the city living in residential rental units." I think this is precisely what we need. I'm amazed, I'm amazed at the folks that have stood up in opposition to this ordinance. I've seen the yard signs opposing the ordinance. The tagline of their movement is saving, save affordable housing. I think it should read rather, save a small group of wealthy property owners. I think it should read rather, "Save a small group of wealthy property owners' bottom line," or "Save unsafe housing." If this op, if this, if those in opposition to this ordinance want to save affordable housing, they would get behind this legislation and push to have unsafe, dilapidated housing cleaned up. They can all pitch in a small amount to help move our city forward, a city that has afforded them a very lucrative rental market that keeps pushing the vacancy rates lower and lower. They can help us get rid of houses without hot water, functioning smoke alarms, and homes where windows are painted or screwed shut. Houses where mold has overtaken the structure because the rain pours in through the roof, holes in the roof. Homes where rodents run throughout due to holes in floors and walls. Places where raw sewage spill into the yard due to problems that started years ago. Now, take a minute and picture those same conditions with a precious seven-year-old second grader right in the middle of it all. I know it's hard to think about, but we must. The conditions happen right here in the city we call home. And you have a chance tomorrow night, or tonight, I wrote the letter yesterday, to start turning the tide. We cannot let a few slum lords throw the perceived weight around and intimidate us. The tenants, which are Opalika citizens, deserve better. Some would say this ordinance is an overreach of government. I disagree. The Attorney General of Alabama approved these regulations, and the goal is to improve the safe and well-being of the citizens you serve. I bet these same folks are quick to ask for a home inspection every time they buy a new house. They want their family safe, and they want the issues all fixed before they move in. So what's the difference for those citizens who choose to rent? Do they not also deserve the same type of inspection, the same safeguards? I think they do. Some would say this is going to drive out the poor. I disagree. This is about making our rental housing options safe, period. This argument is frustrating to me and is manipulation at its finest. This twist of words is a play on emotions. So they want you to be motivated by fear and not act so that our citizens in the low-income housing sector can continue to live in unsafe and unhealthy conditions? Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. These landlords are freaking out at the thought of Mr. Koppelman crossing the thresholds into these houses because they know the truth. They know the issues, and these houses are awful. They, and they would all be embarrassed if we placed a picture of these shacks next to a picture of their face in the Sunday edition of the OA News. We must improve these houses and these, these houses or have them replaced. Good, affordable, safe housing will always be needed. The key word is "safe." They must be safe before they're affordable. These landlords use a backwards model of affordable, then safe, which benefits them, and this needs to change. Are we also surprised that the Lee County Realtor Association is also opposed to this ordinance? Not at all. They want these houses to stay right where they are. And I'll let you read between the lines on that one. I know you understand the majority voice of this organization comes from our neighbors to the west, in a town that requires landlords to have business license and pay fees. The slum lords know this, and they take advantage of our lack of rules, rules that can change tonight. In closing, I would encourage you all to be courageous and to do the right thing. Think about the citizens you serve, both tenants and landlords. Would the simple periodic inspection of rental houses not be the right thing for the common good of the city? Inspections that will keep living conditions safe for all, regardless of socioeconomic status? I would also encourage you to be Opalika-focused and be vision-oriented. Don't let the loud voice of a few landlords cloud that vision. Don't let the pocketbook motives derail us when we have a chance to move this great city forward. Remember our mission. The purpose of Opalika, of the city of Opalika, is to improve the quality of life of all citizens of Opalika through the improvements of, of community services.
Good evening. My name's Jimmy Hurst. I live at eleven oh eight Black Hawk Drive. I'm not gonna talk about the same things I talked about the first time, but I do think it's important, people. President, this afternoon, Biden announcing a new eviction moratorium due to COVID. Couldn't have picked a worse hat, guys, to handle this. We're gonna have another one, okay? It's not gonna help anyone. It's not gonna help the tenants. It's not gonna help the landlords. It's just not good for this country. The next thing, you know, Mr. Beam here, apparently he's been to my houses, in the Brooklyn houses that he manages, and he manages, and he owns, and he owns. I don't know. I've never been to his, so I can't judge. Maybe he's been to all mine. Ask you the question. Okay, look, I oppose the ordinance as a citizen and, and as a landlord. We've got enough big government. We've got enough big government, federal government, state government, and local government. You know, I've asked this many times, and Kurt brought it up. Why, what's the hurry? Why ramrod this through? Let's talk about it, people. I'm gonna get away from my notes. The lack of transparency here has been deplorable for some of you people. That's a fact. I'll look around the room. Some people, people have been left out of this thing. Council people have been left out of it. Why, why can't we all work together? And I agree a hundred percent with the lady that was up here earlier. We've got an ordinance on the books right now. We could've cleaned this town up. Why didn't we do it? She's right. We didn't have to let this go on this long. Why did we choose to ignore that? I don't know the answer to that, okay? But I, you know, folks, we need to be transparent about what's going on. I've had some people tell me, and I'm looking around, do the right thing. Now, I asked y'all to do the right thing. Listen to the citizens on both sides of this equation, the landlords and the tenant. Let's talk, okay? Let's compromise. What's the hurry with a COVID to push this through? A hastily formed ordinance, and there's problems with the ordinance, okay? Morrell alluded to them, other attorneys alluded to them. There are problems with this thing. But, but we're, we're, tonight, we gotta push it through? Look, please back off and think about all this, okay? That's all I asked you. Thank you for your time.
My name is Joseph Stoyber. I reside at eight one seven North Tenth Street. That's my personal home. This is my first time speaking in front of this council or at any public gatherings, so kind of bear with me a little bit, kind of a little nervous on it. I'm sure you can tell by my accent, but I'm not originally from Alabama. I'm actually from a small town called Clayton, California. It's about thirty miles outside of San Francisco. All right, so, I grew up, was raised there for about twenty-two years, and then I moved out to Auburn and Opalika. I did it for a specific reason. I realized, as I was growing up there, there was no chance of me being successful. I have family members, friends, college-educated, highly-educated people, can't buy homes. There's a reason for it. It's not a mystery. It's because when you create these types of things, they continue to grow. They grow, and they grow, and they grow. Sorry, one second. So I thought my perspective in regard to this issue may be valuable in regard to the ordinance, like I think it'd be important to, as somebody who's an outsider, for what's going on here. You know, I was raised in a pretty wealthy area, not a wealthy family. My dad had eighteen children. I don't come from money. I'm one of these landlords. I own several properties in Opalika. I invest highly in them. I take properties that are ten thousand, twelve thousand dollar properties, and I completely renovate them. I'm not a slum lord. Most of the people here are not slum lords. We're trying our absolute best to make these as good as possible. I hadn't been out to California in about fifteen years. That's how much I love Auburn and Opalika. I'll never leave it. I'm not gonna get wealthy. I don't expect to be. I just wanna be a part of growing something to be great. I like fixing my houses, and I like renting them for very reasonable prices. I went back out to California, and one of the things I noticed was rampant homelessness. Rampant. I walked down to cities in San Francisco I walked through for years and years and years, covered in feces. People all over the place with mental illness, walking around as if it was normal. I had brothers and sisters living with my mother, degrees from Cal Berkeley at forty-three years old, working for cable companies. They couldn't buy homes. My sisters who have children can't buy them. This isn't the end. This is the start. This is the start where you say, "Hey, I've gotta take part in this. Hey, we have to step into this. Hey, this, this is what we need to do." Now, growing up there and having very different religious and political beliefs, I came out here, and I was accepted with open arms. It's pretty crazy, like how much I love what's been done and how fast I can see this city has grown in just seventeen years since I've been here. But what I've also noticed is I think we're just about ten years behind where everybody else is, and I think we're gonna move there really, really quickly. And these are the steps that you get to. So I just kinda wanted to hit out a couple little points that I have in here. Consequences for these actions. You are gonna lose these houses. I own several of these properties. I'll knock them down. So you're gonna lose me. I'm the guy who will invest forty-five or fifty thousand dollars in a twelve thousand dollar property to make it really, really nice and rent it for five hundred dollars. Houses that never had ACs, never had central heating and air, brand-new roofs, brand-new siding. I'm the guy that does that. I won't do it. Plain and simple. I'll knock them down. You're gonna increase homelessness. These people won't have houses. And that doesn't mean that it's right that people have people in bad houses, but you already have stuff on the books for this. They can call you. They've always been able to do this. This is just, "We want to go in your house." And going back to what I said previously, excuse me, the reason I left California was philosophical religious beliefs. You don't have the right to go in my property. You just don't. This is where you get to decide this, and you're gonna have a thousand other votes, and mine's not gonna sway pretty much anybody here. You're kinda gonna believe what you're gonna believe. But this is why I'm here. This is why I haven't gone back. So you really need to think about not just this decision, but all the other decisions. Yes, as it says, we have an eye towards the future, but you have to hold on to the past of what we were. And that doesn't mean having people in shanty towns is a great idea. I won't allow it. I'll be here for the next forty years doing it. I'm the guy who is in these neighborhoods on Saturday and Sunday. You can see my car driving around. I'm cutting grass. I'm cutting down trees. I'm fixing the inside of the houses. I'm going to these areas. Anybody who knows me can attest to this. Every weekend, I'm the guy who's working eighty to ninety hours a week. I'm not wealthy. So, appreciate you guys' time. That's all I had to say.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Brad Freeman. I live at three zero one one Stillwood Way, right here in Opalika, brand-new to the area. Thank y'all for just being so warm and welcoming as we moved here from Texas. I am a real estate agent. I am a landlord. I'm a real estate agent because I'm a landlord, and I'm in the process of moving properties from Texas to, uh, right here in Opalika. And, and I'm not a slum lord. I will put my face next to every door that I have. I personally show my properties. I personally paint them on the inside. I, my tenants have my cell phone number. Like, they call me, they text me. And, and so I, the, the they's and the thems, and like, who does everything, and the landlords are, are this, that, it's, like, it's just grouping people up. There are problems in every community, and I think those problems need to be addressed. I don't think that this legislation is the solution with the way it's written. I think that there needs to be collaboration. And, and I'm, and I'm, but I am in favor of the opening, which is to improve the, the community here, to improve the housing va, values, to improve what it's like to live here. Before I rented my first home in this town, I went to an HOA meeting, and people were complaining about the quality of the neighborhood and that it was going down, and I just invested in that neighborhood. The first thing I said was, "Hey, look, I don't live in the neighborhood, but everybody in the last year has made money on the, on the value of their property going up. If you want to maintain that property value, we gotta maintain the neighborhoods." And so I wanna get in there. I wanna be involved. I wanna be people, see people be successful in their ownership of, uh, the homes in their neighborhoods, whether they own it or they're tenants. But inside this document, it says that, you know, the one appeal process we have is to go through the, the board, and then ultimately, the city council is the final arbitrator, and it says, "Their decision will be, shall." I use the word "shall" "be final." "Shall." And, and that's an important word, so I'm gonna get back to it here in just a second to talk about the international, uh, document for the maintenance of buildings, right? Because that, that document is full of the word "shall" as well. And I'm pretty sure that when the city council is the final arbitrator, that they shall have that final, uh, answer, that, that's, that's not written anywhere else in the, in the federal government. It's not in the state government. There's always an opportunity to, uh, look and make sure that we're on the right side of, of progress, or we're on the right side of the law, or we're on the right side of doing the right thing. And, and here, it just ends. It ends with the city council without an opportunity to go anywhere else. And, and I, that's not right, right? I'm pretty sure the president doesn't have the authority to make a statement and that be the final decision. I'm pretty sure that's where the Supreme Court spends a lot of their time, is going over documents signed by the president. But, you know, it's small things like that in this document that, that are, that are just, show that it's not ready for prime time, that it needs to be re-looked at. That doesn't mean that we don't care about tenants. It doesn't mean that we don't care about the community. I live in this community, just like everybody else does here, and, you know, it needs to be cleaned. There, there are places that need to be cleaned up, right? And you'll put trash cans in the, in the center of, uh, roundabouts to, to try and do that. You know, it's the recognition that pride in the local community is important, but this document doesn't solve that problem. It would be, uh, my position that it be tabled, reconsidered, and reevaluated so that it could have the effect that you're looking for, um, so that it doesn't hurt tenants. The reason I'm moving my properties from Texas right now is because I lost complete control over them from the city council. The city council took control of my properties, uh, in the sense that even when tenants didn't have leases, it couldn't evict them. And I know that that's beyond what the current moratorium is, but no, no, nothing I could do, but I'm still paying taxes, and the tax rate's about three times higher than it is here. And so still paying those taxes, still paying insurance, still paying maintenance, still can't evict, still can't, um, collect rent. Um, and, and, you know, and that's from the city council, just making a decision on their own, even in the face of the, of the state court stand, it's unconstitutional for, for them to do that. But it still rides, and it still progresses, and it pushes people out of the community. Last time I checked, about ten minutes ago on Zillow, there are six properties for rent here in Opalika. Six. There's six listed, right, on Zillow? One of them's an apartment building, five, single-family homes. There's just not a lot. You know, you, people will leave if it doesn't work. I'm leaving Texas. I know a lot of people who are leaving Texas. At least Travis County because it's not working there. Please don't do that to this place. We came here because we like it. It fits us. We love this place. I wanna stay here. My kids are here. My mom's here. I've got family all up and down Alabama. So, thank y'all. I appreciate your time.
My name's Sonny Mormon, and I live at two sixty-four Carter Street in Auburn, Alabama. And I thank you for the opportunity to address this body. I've, I've been a landlord since eighty-five, and I don't look that old, but it was good to see myself in those last two young men, just full of enthusiasm about going in and making something nice out of a place that isn't so nice. So, anyway, I've been doing this a long time. I've got a half a dozen properties that I took the plunge on and got them paid off. I've got one more to go. Have it paid off by the end of the year, so pretty excited about that. Most everything I know about this ordinance, I've gotten from a local newspaper. And so I've got a few quotes here and a couple of questions based around those quotes. And so I've got a few quotes here and a couple of questions based around those quotes. One of the members of this council in this particular article from twenty-nine July said that the most you can be inspected is once every three years. And I noted that it was a fifty-dollar fee if you got inspected. And in the same article, it quoted the ordinance, section twelve dash fifty-one, which states that properties will be required to be inspected whenever a property becomes vacant, because you have to get an occupancy certificate. And then skipping on down to section twelve dash fifty-three, also in the same article, it says that it allows for additional inspections anytime a complaint is made. So I was very confused and I bring that question, not expecting an answer tonight, but I guess there's confusion in general over how many inspections are possible and when they occur. Other quotes that, that I got from that same article are as follows. It says proactive inspections will protect the occupants of rental units. And it, it doesn't say anything, oh, and the general public. It doesn't say anything about protecting the other party interests, which of course is the landlord. Another quote says that this ordinance will help reduce fear of landlords' retaliation. Another quote says this decree will not apply to section eight or public housing, as has been discussed before. And I thought, why, why wouldn't it? I mean, are, am I a bad person and a section-eight landlord, or whatever the current term is, is not a bad person? I, I feel like I've been called a bad person through this whole process. I feel like I may go to jail, as I learned here tonight. And I also did a quick tally. Out of those six properties, I have two with COVID. I hadn't stopped to think about it, but two out of six are sick right now. And so that's just the state of the world in which we find ourselves. Just another quick word or two, not found in the article. I was inspired to say the following things. A lease is an arm's-length transaction between two responsible and competent parties. I consider myself responsible and competent, and when I look in the eyes of a potential tenant, that's what I'm looking for. Somebody who's responsible and competent and cares about my property a little bit. Not as much as I do, but a little bit. And I promise you, I'll take care of them. I will cut their grass, unstop their plumbing and whatever it takes. Another thought that hit me is that the tenant is the ultimate inspector of his property. If somebody walks through the house and says, I'll take it, I respect that opinion. I think it's still an arm's-length transaction. I don't think that landlords are, are, need to be presumed to be evil or guilty. And that really bothers me. I guess that's why I'm standing here, because of all the things that are talked about, I don't want to be in the group of bad people. I think that landlords provide a valuable service, sometimes to an ungrateful clientele. If you've ever been left in the middle of the night by a tenant who leaves a terrible mess in your place, you don't, you don't want to repeat that. So you're very careful next time you select a tenant. But landlords provide a service for their community and I thank you for your time.
Hey, my name is Susan Bolt. I live on East University Drive in Auburn, but I own rental property in Opalika and I'm a business owner in Opalika for forty-two years, very proud to say. So I do love Opalika as well. Tonight, I wanted to take a different tact because I echo what a lot of the people have already said here with regard to landlords being put in a bad light. But tonight, I want to make some points from the Cato Handbook for Policymakers that talks about property rights and the Constitution. America's founding, founders understood clearly that private property is the foundation not only of prosperity, but for freedom itself. Thus, through the common law, state law, and the Constitution, they protected property rights, the rights of people to acquire, use, and dispose of property freely. The Constitution protects property rights through the Fifth and Fourth, Fourteenth Amendments, due process clause, and more directly through the Fifth Amendment's taking clause. There are two basic ways government can take property. One is directly. Two is through regulations that take uses, leaving the title with the owner, so-called regulating takings. Property is the foundation of every right we have, including the right to be free. John Locke, the philosophical father of the American Revolution and the inspiration for Thomas Jefferson when he drafted the Declaration of Independence, stated the issue simply, "Lives, liberties, and estates, which I call by the general name, property." And James Madison, the principal author of the Constitution, echoed those thoughts when he wrote, "As a man is said to have a right to his property, he may equally said to have a property in his rights." That's one of the things that I want y'all to consider. You all said the pledge of allegiance. You say the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America every meeting. When you took your oath of office, you swore to honor the state constitution and the constitution of the United States of America. So I just wanted to remind you of that. I didn't see any reason to repeat what some others have said, but the gentleman that came from California, that's what he's telling you. Pay attention to the Constitution because we've already allowed the government to erode our rights as property owners because we pay property taxes. We never own our property. We rent it from our government and shame on us for allowing that. And what y'all are trying to do now is further erode our property rights. We don't need you in our house. I'm not a slumlord. If I were, my renters wouldn't be there. I feel for the people who do have slumlords and I do think we need to address that. This isn't the way to do it. I sit on the state board of heating, air conditioning, refrigeration. We are a consumer board and we are a complaint-driven board. That works. It's working for that state board. I see it. I think we need to look at the proposal that y'all have here. I, I agree, we're not there yet. We need somebody solving some problems. And I'm concerned that you've had some realtors on there and you've had some other people on there that are concerned that this isn't where we need to be, that we've, we're not at a solution yet. I mean, you have people that know the industry, yet you have some other people who have a lot of experience in the industry too, that you didn't include in the discussion. I'm a business owner. I solve problems every day, whether I want to or not. I might have some solutions as well. I think there are a lot of people who may have some solutions that you probably just haven't talked to yet. So I did want to remind you that the state has a Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act. It, it lays out some stipulations on what has to be done. Alabama has habitability laws. The city already has a property maintenance code as, as an example of that, is you're taking care of weed abagements, using it to do that. I've always thought it was interesting that you can't make people sick enough to make everybody healthy. You can't make people broke enough to make everybody rich. And you can't enforce enough regulations to make everybody a good landlord. Don't punish those of us who take care of our properties. We want everybody to have a nice pla, I can't speak for everybody. I would love for everybody to have a nice place to live. But what if the city of Opalika implemented something so that they helped to teach tenants how to upkeep a property? It doesn't mean they have to take on the expense, but I know myself, I've had tenants, they can't tighten a screw in a light switch. Maybe I can teach them to do that. I'll teach them in my property, but perhaps that would be helpful. I don't know how many people would attend and that would be the problem, because those are the people that are suffering, but they need to be taught how to take care of something. And I'm not saying everybody and I'm not blaming them, so don't misconstrue what I'm saying. But I'm asking the council to back up, take a pause, look at it. I don't think you're there yet. There's no rush. You have the laws on the books. Enforce them that way. Look at a complaint-driven system and honor the Constitution and your oath of office.
My name's Al Henry. My business is at thirteen oh two First Avenue in Opalika. And I own, I own property in every ward in the city. After hearing everybody talk tonight, I mean, if, if we're going to be successful as a city or anything we do, it can't be about us. It's just my belief. And if we're not going to inspect section eight, we're not going to solve the problem. My theory is it's going to make the problem worse. If I had some standard housing, I would move to section eight because it has a, it has a more stringent, a less stringent code than what y'all are providing. So I think you're going to make the problem worse. You're going to shrink the number of non-substandard units, or I'm, I'm sorry if that's the right word, but you're going to shrink the number of units that aren't on section eight, which is going to drive up the, the rent. And if it's not about us, those people have to go somewhere. Also, the fees are going to make rent go up. The, the mayor's talking about two dollars a year. Guys, we're talking about thirty-five hundred units in the city of Opalika that are not section eight and y'all are proposing that one employee inspects them, shows up to trials for them, files appeals? There's no way. That's, that's asinine. I mean, you're looking at six to eight people and, I mean, fees have to go up if we're going to, if we're going to pay for that. And like Mr. McNeil and several other people have pointed out, there's holes all in this. Let us be a part of it. We want Opalika to be better. You know, I agree with Chuck. We want Opalika to be better, but we have a, we have something on the books right now that you can condemn a house. If you, if you can, if you can take a house from a man because he does not mow the grass, you can take a house from a man because it's got a hole in the ceiling. So I would ask that you would vote no. I would ask that you would back up and punt, figure out a better system, like the young lady just said about the complaint-driven. There's better options out there. We can do it together. Just give us a chance, because it's not about us. It's about the tenants. And if they're better, everybody's better. But what we're proposing right now is going to hurt them by increased fees, increased rents. They can afford it. They can afford it, plus all the holes that's in the, the thing y'all proposed. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm Karen Harris and I've lived in Opalika all of my life at thirty, and I reside at thirty-two eleven West Point Parkway. We've owned rental property for thirty-two years. So I tend to disagree or I, for the life of me, do not understand how any landlord could support this ordinance. I'm not a slumlord. My shortest-term tenant right now has been with me for three years. I had one just to move in December that had been with me for fifteen years. So that should tell you I'm not a slumlord. I don't think this is directed at me. It's not directed at the majority of the landlords in here. When this was first approached, we were given the case of a situation on Long Street where there was a fire and there were several children that passed in that fire. That was a section-eight property. So that's another concern. If you take on inspections and there's a fire, and it can happen, because it has happened to one of my rental houses, our city is going to be involved in a lawsuit because they've inspected that property. There's just too many holes in this ordinance and I'm not against it. I'm not against, I don't want any tenant to live in a bad house. Heaven forbid there should ever be rugs on the floor. My maintenance person has worked for me all of my life, since we've had rental property. And he has said, I love to work for you because you say fix it, don't patch it. It's an investment. And I retired out of banking, so I've been in both sides. I've been with people that were borrowing money. I had to borrow money to get started. We started off with ten rental properties. I'm down to three. It's a headache. It's a headache for everybody. But the majority of the people take care of their rental property. So unless we include the substandard housing, we're not, we're not solving the problems. Also, this is a perfect storm for our market to decline, for the real estate market to decline. People are going to start selling because they don't want to, to live under government regulations. And we're not going to have any investors to purchase. So we're going to create a market decline. We're going to lose income for the city of Opalika. This ordinance is just too many holes and it's not good. And I'm asking you to back up, include people, to say, what can we do to make it better? We have rules and regulations there now. Enforce them. But on the other side, as a landlord, we get some crazy requests. So we shouldn't be held accountable for what somebody wants a room painted pink when it's painted blue. And there's just too many holes in this. So back up, table it. They say, let's take care of our property, but unless you're including the section eight, you're not taking care of the property. You're not solving the problem.
I'll leave in just a minute. I'm Sally Phillips and I live in Opalika at eleven oh two Willow Run. My husband and I also have rental property. We've only had it five or six years, but we take the responsibility to provide adequate and safe housing, just as these many, many people do. Nothing new there. But I have the privilege of serving in the South Side community of this city. So I see substandard housing every week. Some of it may be rental property, some of it may be owner property. I have no way of knowing that. But if only a few of those houses are rental property, this situation needs to be dealt with. I too put pencil to paper like Mayor Fuller did and I came up with a two-dollar-a-month raise in rent that I'm going to have to charge my, my tenants. I believe I can take two dollars of, of the rent that I receive if it would ensure the tenants that are far below us, having saved, warm, hot running water, cold in water, and structurally sound. That is just simply the right thing to do. Also, I might add, if you decide to table the, the ordinance tonight, that you extend the three-year inspection to a five-year frame. Remove the inspection after every tenant moves out. That would really impair us, but I have houses that turn over every year, so I may have to pay for that inspection three or four times in a year on a single house. And then inspect all the rentals every five years and give a certificate of safe housing that can be shown to the tenant. This may help any backlog that would come from the city. That backlog would be very frustrating for both tenants and the, the property owners. It needs to be considered as, that I am standing in favor of the ordinance. I think it's the right thing to do.
I appreciate everybody that said their piece tonight because it's less that I now have to say. I can just agree with anyone who's against this ordinance. I haven't heard much. I haven't heard much that I don't agree with. The fact that we have some, sorry, I'm Emily Key with Three Keys Properties, three oh one Twin Lakes Avenue in Opelika. We talked about how we already have some ordinance on the books, and maybe people aren't understanding what that means, but if we have a forty-five mile an hour speed limit and everyone's going sixty, what do we do? We put up flashing signs. We put an extra officer out there to try and catch people who are doing something wrong. But what do we not do? Put up three more speed limit signs that say the same thing? And that's what this ordinance is. We expect people who are not following the ordinance that we already have, the one that this city is not enforcing, we expect people to now follow another one and expect our city to actually enforce it instead, after years of not enforcing the other. I request that we go back to the ordinance that is already on the books and that we look at that one and start enforcing it the same way as we do our weed abatements. Also, some of the slum houses that everyone drives by and sees, I own some of them, but I can tell you now that I would let any one of you into that house, because when we bought these a few years ago, there were rugs over holes in the floor. I had a tenant, meeting this tenant for the first time, they've been in the house ten years, and they said, "Miss Emily, don't step there, you'll fall through the floor." We had to get out there and rectify that right away. But guess what? That would not be rectified with this ordinance, because as I said, that man had been in the house ten years. As long as he stayed in that house, this ordinance would not require that house to ever be inspected, and fifteen years from now, as long as he's still in it, there would still be a hole in the floor with a rug over it, and none of you would have anything to say about it. This is only when the property becomes vacant. And yet, most of these landlords that I've met over the past few weeks, we all have tenants who want to die in our house. They want to live in it for the next fifty years until we have to carry them out, because they enjoy where they live, they like their home, and as long as they're in it, it will never be inspected with this ordinance. So it's not the solution to the problem that this city does have, the problem that I've been working to fix for nine years, and I feel like I'm going to completely fail in my work if this ordinance passes. Everything that I've done for the city, this has taken me all the way back to the beginning. I have forty-something houses, and I'm going to have to get a hundred more to make the same difference after this ordinance passes. Real quick, the City of Opelika Character Word of the Month is optimism. This was on the city's page yesterday morning. It's a noun. The definition is hopefulness and confidence about the future of the successful outcome of something. I am not optimistic right now. If our city passes this ordinance, I do not see how many people in this room can say that this is the word of our month. Optimism? This ordinance is the opposite of hopefulness and confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on. Yes, sir. Unless you want to speak. You want to speak? You want to speak from there?
I imagine most of y'all in here know me, or know of me, anyway. And I know Eddie and all of us, because we've done a lot of work and all the stuff with each other. But I don't believe there's anybody here that's been in the business as long as I have and haven't been through as much stuff. I was got first and then came to Opelika while I was in Auburn University, mechanical engineer. My ex-wife, she was in chemistry. And I bought six tenths of an acre, I'd say, of where the park is, where it used to be. And my sister bought the other half. It was one and two tenths acres, and each one of those. And she got, she had a daughter that was going to Auburn University, and I took and put the trailer on that six tenths, put four lots on it, and my unit was on one lot, and the other three units, I rented out. People in Opelika and around, I've dealt with thousands and thousands of people through the years. That was nineteen sixty-nine when I started on it, and now here it is, twenty-one. People that I've dealt with, I've dealt good, the bad, and the ugly. And you found people, I've moved over homes over a hundred thousand miles, so I was in all kinds of places all over the southeast. People have got to stop and think. People have got to live. People have got to have somewhere to go. Now, out of mine, I used to have a hundred and twenty lots and had fifty-eight rental trailers in there. And I was also running heavy equipment. I've got a backup, all kind of heavy equipment, done a lot of stuff with the city up here, helping them do stuff. But you got to use some reasoning about it. Out of the now, if they talk about the, what the, oh, boy, on the wall that you, the smoke detector, I get it straightened up, I mean, it may be three years old, but I can still get by with it. But it might just take a few minutes to get it straightened back up. But they have, the city of Opelika takes, and we're talking about smoke detectors, they have to, well, I found in mine, they had to look at, go in a unit and look at the smoke detector and be sure you had one before they cut your power on. And out of all of the trailers that I moved, and I'm in any kind of, all kind of conditions, all the people had to do is turn, is turn, say something, or either move, they won't do it, move, and if you got a hole in the floor, they have to remind the people that owns it. Now, if I fall in that floor, you're going to have a lawsuit on it. So you can bet your boots they're going to put something in the hole and run them off one. You know, so it isn't any use in taking and taking. Like, out of having that hundred and some twenty lots and fifty-eight rentals, how much time would I have in turning that many that are going to turn over to do all the different things that we got on these rules here? You couldn't do it, and it'd be costly. And they can't say it won't cost you, because anything you do and anything you build or anything you handle, it costs you. And the last thing that's going to be with the price for rental is that they're going to add everything to that. They can't stay in business if you don't. And this is a lot to think about. Like I said, I own the development of our city. I took and went to the city and asked them to try to get the veterans Parkway and move Highway Two, Two eighty from going through town, put it out at Tiger Town. I gave, they said, I told them, I said, "I'll give you sixteen acres. I'll give you sixteen acres of property if that's whatever you take for mind to do it." So we did that, and we donated that to them, and it's developed. It's made people proud of this city, and they're really doing a lot with it, a lot of these here I've dealt with, a lot. So you've got to put something out to get something back. And so you could, too much, we're getting to, in this, we're getting too much control, and it's getting too many little things that's going to get you away from the main thing is to keep it. But if the people, they've got to have, and look at, they do look at it, rather, the smoke detectors and all that. And if you got to look in the floor, I've moved over two hundred, over a hundred thousand mobile homes. I mean, I've moved them all the way to over the southeast. I've even been on the other side of New Orleans, this side of Atlanta, and moving them. And you've seen every kind of thing that you want to do. So let's sit down and see if we can't work something out and do it. And out of the mobile home part, they, I tell, I've had a hard time with it, because people didn't like them. But I'm living in a double-wide now, and it's three-bedroom, two full baths, and a huge living room area. It's warm, it's warmer and better than what my, the home that I was rid in, and we tunk it. So some people can't afford it. I could afford to live north side if I wanted to. I took the other week, and then I had, I used to have about sixty acres in there. I sold six acres of it, and I sold it for a hundred, six hundred thousand dollars. And I could afford what I wanted in the north side if I wanted to. And that's where I live with that double-wide. There's seventeen acres still left in that side. He offered me a hundred and twenty-five thousand an acre for that seventeen acre. So, you know, I ain't going to miss a meal. You know? And I still got seventeen acres on the other side of the street. So let's all work together, because if you take, people have got to have somewhere to live. And if people, if people don't do right, they can, whether they can say, "But don't go every time that you've got a tenant moving out, you've got to go put them inspected on the other." Because they're going to, they'll have to check some of it with the city, the smoke detectors and all of that, before they can get power, and they got to have power.
Yeah.
So let's work together and see what we can all do, we have to make a better place.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate everything everybody's done. Thank you.
My name is Joel Phillips, eleven oh two Willow Run. My wife spoke a little while ago. I didn't realize she was going to talk. Heck, I didn't know I was going to talk when I saw you there. But there's some things that I wonder about the outcome of this ordinance, and that is, it's going to affect the socioeconomic section tremendously in this town. Has anybody come up with any idea of the answer to that? As people that, when you put in this ordinance that are going to lose their home, where are they going? I have not heard anybody address this, that most of these landlords here have decent houses, and it's not a problem to us. My rental houses, I would live in. I know there's some of them that are not standard, up to standard. Need to work with that. But these people, that it's going to affect socioeconomic section, we need to address. And I forgot what I was going to say. But I don't know who wrote this ordinance. Has anything been addressed to it? It hadn't been conveyed to homeowners other than what we've heard the last few weeks. Some people say that I need to, it's imperative on me to, everybody have up standard living quarters. It is not up to me to provide the living quarters up to a standard. It is up to me to provide up to standard if I'm going to have one. I do not owe it to anybody, put them into great status, but if I am going to rent it, then I need to rent it out to a standard. And no such thing as bubble upstairs, and so they would need to work for that. I'd like to see this table and a commission of city people and landlords of all levels get together, hash it out, and let it be discussed amongst people for a while before it comes back to the city council for passage or turned down. And look at the other end of the spectrum. Thank you.
I hate to change the subject, but I'm not a slumlord, and I don't own property for other people. I'm here as a parent to address the issue about the mask mandate that the city has endorsed. I know this is a Board of Education issue, but they are not elected. You are, and you appointed them. So I guess my biggest question is, where is the actual evidence? I know they go by recommendations and opinions, but looking at evidence, it completely opposes what I've read, so I'm just going to share some of those things. I'm here also as a parent. I have a child at Opelika High School, wearing masks for six to eight hours a day, social distancing, contact tracing. This has all created an epidemic of anxiety, depression, and fear in our children. The CDC has found that mental health-related emergency room visits increased thirty-one percent in 2020 for children between the ages of twelve and seventeen from March to October, compared in the same period in 2019. Surgical masks are loose-fitting devices that were designed to be worn by medical personnel to protect accidental contamination of patient wounds and to protect the wearers against splashes or sprays of bodily fluids. The CDC has found that mental health, excuse me, in May 2020, the CDC released a scientific study on non-pharmaceutical measures for pandemic influenza in non-healthcare settings, personal protective and environmental measures, emerging infectious diseases, clearly stating in our systemic review, we identified ten randomly controlled trials that reported estimates of the effectiveness of face masks in reducing laboratory-confirmed influenza virus infections, by the way, which are the same size as the coronavirus. This literature was published during 1946 through July 27, 2018. In pooled analyses, we found that no significant reduction in influenza transmission with the use of face masks. While the masks serve no level of protection, scientific studies show that they lower oxygen levels in the blood while raising carbon dioxide levels. They affect respiratory physiology function. They actually trap exhaled viral pathogens, which increase the severity of viral load. They collect and colonize viruses and bacteria. They are dangerous for those with asthma or other respiratory issues. My child has asthma, as many children at Opelika do, and they are also a major threat to a child's development due to anxiety, sleep problems, and creating a fear of germs. As a teacher of twenty-five years in the system, I love our Board of Education, I love my principal, my superintendent, but I just don't understand why they've made that choice to make it a mandate and not leave it up to the parents to make that choice. We can clearly see evidence from other studies that masks do not work. If people choose to wear a mask, that should be their right, but it should be up to the parents to make that decision. And so please ask your board why. I just want to see the evidence. I don't think we should just go by what their opinion is. I mean, I know who the board members are. I respect them. They're smart people, but I want to know what the actual scientific evidence says. And the evidence that I'm looking at from multiple sources do not say that they work. And as a teacher, I see kids with anxiety attacks from last year. They don't like the mask. They can't breathe. They have headaches, and I don't think they're safe. safe. And I don't think they work. But again, it should be up to the parents. And I will be addressing them soon. Thank you for your time.
Hi. My name is Jordan Benefield. I live at Two O Four Second Avenue in Opelika. Um, I am, I'm a divorced mom of one. And I'm broke. I'm single too.
Love it first night.
That was a, I'm sorry. That's, that's all of the reason I came up here. No, um, uh, I, I got divorced and, um, and I lost the little bit of things that I had, um, except for some patio furniture. It was nice. Um, and I was really blessed to have a couple of the landlords that have spoken tonight step up for me. Um, I can't afford to live in Auburn and I can't afford to live in Opelika. Um, the only reason I have a decent place for my sandalais head every night is because of the generosity that was shown to me by the landlords in this room. Um, I'm concerned as a tenant, as a future tenant, um, that more regulation, more red tape, and more money will interfere with being able to find a place like I've been able to. Um, if there are ordinances on the books that are not being enforced, let's do that. Um, but let's not add onto the plate of people who, from my personal experiences, are helping people in this community who don't have anywhere else to go, as I sure did. So, thank you. That's it.
Does anyone else want to speak? We got one love affair going, so, uh... Okay. We will move on. By the way, I hate to keep you all waiting, but that is the, on the last thing. So, hang tight. Uh, general business, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, first item under general business is a request from Opelika First Badges for their back-to-school fall kickoff event on August 8th, 2021.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Second item is a request from Opelika Main Street for First Avenue Block parties on September 18th and December 11th, 2021.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Third item is a public hearing for a project agreement with Hanwha Simron LLC.
Uh, this is a public hearing. I declare a public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare a public hearing closed.
Fourth item is a public hearing for a weed abatement assessment on Columbus Parkway.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare a public hearing closed.
Fifth and final item is a public hearing for a weed abatement assessment at 723 Pleasant Drive.
I declare this vote hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time.
So, I got the note, notice for the people. I, I really, uh, got some plan. I got the whole time.
Yes, please.
This is the wrong address. I got this from the people live there. They have, they, they give, they send the wrong address.
You own the property and someone else lives there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, you're not the current owner anymore?
I'm, mm-hmm.
Do you currently own the property?
Yeah.
Okay. So, she got, I think it went, your address has changed, is that?
Yes.
Okay. But she did enter with the notice, so.
Okay.
This is the property located at 723 Pleasant Drive.
So, has this issue been resolved?
Yeah, we, we cut the grass after I got this. But, uh, I don't know what the money...
Where's Jeff?
Well...
It's code, it's code compliance. It's not Jeff.
Okay.
It's code compliance.
We got Joey.
Falls under legal.
Well, the notice is...
Making Joey work.
This notice is sent after the grass has already been cut by the city's contractor.
Right.
So, she may have cut, she may have cut the grass again after...
Okay.
As you know, we've had a lot of rain and the grass is growing.
So, the weed abatement assessment is for a cutting that had already happened?
It has.
Okay. And so, for her to be able to get that correct, is she's going to have to pay that, those dollars to get the assessment?
Yes.
Cleared off of the title. So, if you'll see the guy in, uh...
Revenue Department.
Waving at you, he'll, he'll help you.
So, is it before this letter, uh, this, uh, city sent the first letter?
Once you get the letter, we've already cut the property.
This is the only letter?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I see. Yeah, that's the idea.
Right. You'll need to speak with him or really the revenue department for the city.
Yeah, okay. Let the, let me come here today. That's what I want.
Because this is when the public hearing is. It's not letting you know this is when the public hearing is.
Yeah, okay.
I declare a public hearing closed. Resolutions, Mr. Gunnar?
Mr. President, the first resolution approves a refund in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred fifteen dollars, twenty-seven cents to ecological installation, uh, for occupational license fees paid in era for the period of 2019 through the first quarter of 2021.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, the second resolution is really good news for the city and for the Opelika Police Department. On June 30th of this year, Jerry and Lynn Schwarzhauer donated to the city of Opelika eighty-two shares of NVDA Corporation. The city sold those shares of stock and after payment of commissions, received the sum of sixty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. Uh, the Schwarshowers conditioned this gift of the stock on the city using those proceeds to purchase an Apex Officer Training Simulator. And, uh, this is fairly new equipment, uh, and in fact, I think it will be the first city of, in the state of Alabama that utilizes this particular simulator. Simulators give real-life, uh, scenarios for police officers, particularly in the use of force, like when to fire, uh, a firearm or to use other less drastic means. And so, you have before you a resolution that will accept the generous donation of the Schwarshowers and will approve a proposal from Govrid Technology Incorporated for the Apex Officer Pro Training Simulator. Uh, the proposal, uh, is for sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, which includes a discount of forty-eight thousand dollars, forty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars for a first in Alabama discount. And, uh, uh, no city funds will be used to purchase this, this simulator because this generous donation will cover the whole cost.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. Is there any discussion? I would ask, Mr. Jones, if you would prepare a thank you letter to the Schwarshowers for our signature to the resolution. Uh, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, the city has, uh, used the Mark Foster Company for promotional testing and assessment services for promotions in the Opelika Police Department and Opelika Fire Department. That contract is, is expired. You have before you resolution number three, which approves a renewal of the contract for an additional three years. And, uh, the police department and the fire department are very pleased with these services. And it's the administration's recommendation that the city renew this contract.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number five is a companion resolution to resolution number four. This resolution approves certain tax abatements and exemptions from Hanwha Simron LLC.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I'd just like to thank Lori Hughley and the economic development team and John Swetman. You guys are doing a, a bang-up job and we appreciate all the opportunities you bring to Opelika.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number five is a companion resolution to resolution number four. This resolution approves certain tax abatements and exemptions from Hanwha Simron LLC.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, did I hear somebody? Second. Okay. Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number six, uh, provides for an amendment to the 2020-2024 Comprehensive Plan and Program Year for the CDBG Action Plan.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number seven is a companion to the preceding resolution. This approves the, uh, annual action plan for the 2021 program year.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The, uh, ninth resolution is a companion to the, uh, second ordinance on tonight's agenda. Uh, several years ago, the city acquired from Lee County a very small parcel of land consisting of, uh, three hundredths of an acre. It's a hundred and ten feet by a hundred and ten feet.
Mr. Gunnar, did we skip grant application with Aldoc for industrial access road grant? That's number eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did skip that. All right. Resolution number eight is, uh, approves an application to Aldoc for this access road that will serve the new industry in Opelika. Uh, I believe it, uh, the city's local match would be approximately ninety thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number ten approves a weed lien, lien assessment in the amount of two hundred ninety dollars and seven, seventeen cents against a parcel of land located on Columbus Parkway.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number ten approves a weed lien, lien assessment in the amount of two hundred ninety dollars and seven, seventeen cents against a parcel of land located on Columbus Parkway.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number seven is a companion to the preceding resolution. This approves the, uh, annual action plan for the 2021 program year.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The, uh, ninth resolution is a companion to the, uh, second ordinance on tonight's agenda. Uh, several years ago, the city acquired from Lee County a very small parcel of land consisting of, uh, three hundredths of an acre. It's a hundred and ten feet by a hundred and ten feet.
Mr. Gunnar, did we skip grant application with Aldoc for industrial access road grant? That's number eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did skip that. All right. Resolution number eight is, uh, approves an application to Aldoc for this access road that will serve the new industry in Opelika. Uh, I believe it, uh, the city's local match would be approximately ninety thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number ten approves a weed lien, lien assessment in the amount of two hundred ninety dollars and seven, seventeen cents against a parcel of land located on Columbus Parkway.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having a non-call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Ordinance is, Mr. Gunnar?
Mr. President, the first ordinance comes to, uh, comes to the council for second reading. Uh, this is an ordinance adopting a registration and inspection program for residential properties being rented within the city of Opelika. As the ordinance implies, there's two components. There's an inspection component and there's a, uh, inspection component also, registration component and an inspection component.
Is there a motion for approval?
I make a motion that we table this particular, uh, registration and inspection program.
motions to table take precedence. They're not debatable. Needs a... Needs a second, though.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table it. Not debatable. Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Nay.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Dr. Lofton.
Aye.
Mr. Rout.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four ayes, one nay.
All right, that will remain on the table until it's brought back up by the council. The second ordinance is before the council for first reading, and this is a companion with that preceding ordinance. This authorizes an exchange of real property between the city and CJCF LLC. Again, that's Deke Hillier's Limited Liability Company. The city will be exchanging that small piece of property behind South Eighth Street for another parcel, small parcel of land located behind the buildings on South Railroad Avenue. And the city will place the solid waste receptacle on this piece of property instead.
Has for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Mr. Rout, thank you for doing so. Is any other business coming forward to council? I'd like to go back and use privilege. I think that tonight, we saw a true form of democracy, because I can tell you that when we came here, there was not a plan to have this thing tabled. So we're listening. So everyone that spoke and said that we needed to table this and get more input, we don't expect you to go missing when it comes time to get more input. If we're going to do it, and we're going to do it according to how you as landlords want it done, then we've got to have your input. And I do remind you that we had this in March, and we asked for that. And whether or not we got it or not, I don't know. Some of it we got because we had a group put together. Whether or not that worked, obviously, it didn't. So we're going to try it again. But the only way we can do it is that we get the information from you and understand what it is we got, or what it is we need, or what it is we don't got, if that's such a word. So I commend you for taking a position of unifying, coming here and telling us that, you know, look, you're not doing it the way we want it done. You're not doing it the way that we feel is fair. Let's redo it. So we're going to do it. We're going to redo it. It's not going to go away. The because there is got to be a way to monitor the number of rental properties that are that we have in our property. We don't know what those numbers are. You know, it could be it could be 4,000 that we talked about. It could be 2,000. We need to find out what it is. And then we need to find out, if it's got problems, what needs to be done about it. And then we need to find out when you as landlords are going to get it done. And we don't want to be the court. We don't want to be the judge. We don't want to be the jury. But understand, please, that the reason that we are talking about this ordinance is not because we think the landlords are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. We're talking about this ordinance because the tenants told us that they needed help. So there are no tenants in here that spoke, and as Chuck Bean said, I'll let you figure it out on your own. So we got to get back to work. You know what you got to do. You know what your tenants need. You know, let's get together, let's get it fixed, okay?
Mr. President, may I make a statement as well? I, too, want to thank you all for showing up today because I had some concern with transparency in this process as well. By no means am I saying that nothing is going to happen because I have walked into houses and ward two where there are exposed wires, where there's mold, where there are there is no flooring, just completely unsafe conditions. I completely some of those conditions, I have actually reported to DHR myself because I cannot believe that someone would rent a home to someone. I don't care if you're charging them $25. You know, there should be some type of standards. So I'm not saying anything is not going to happen because something has to happen. I just don't think the process that the City of Opelika took was the right thing to do. They did not give you a voice. There is only one mayor. There's only one city council representative for each ward, but there's a whole lot of you all. And you at least should have been invited to the table, and I don't think we did a great job at that. The other thing, too, that we could have done better is that there is no competition. We wouldn't have to have this meeting, you know, or this discussion because if people had other affordable housing, they could choose between whether they want to rent your property or another property. When I was first running for office and I went around to different neighborhoods within my ward, they continually told me affordable housing. They need affordable housing. That was expressed here today. There's only seven houses available on Zillow. The City of Opelika has had an opportunity, year after year, to provide more affordable housing. We are not a broke city. We have an opportunity to help our citizens, and I'm really disappointed by, I'll say, administration as well as council in the past as well, that they did not move this